We're really, people are also looking to see if I can find him. I don't know. But he watches.
We're going to call to order the June 2nd meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council tonight in the pledge, which we do each week. And tonight, the pledge will be led by two of our students from Our Lady of Grace School, Lexi McDonald and Elena Ledesma. If you ask Lexi and Elena to please come forward to the podium to lead in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with one underrepresented employee, senior crime analyst, with local 522, West Sacramento Police Officers Association, local 39, and no action was taken, discussion only. That brings us to item 1A, which is presentations on the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, this is a, we're precluded by state law from taking action on items that are brought before us under item 1A, but it does provide an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the city council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the cards that's available at the door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use, and that's to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard tonight. And so to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that flip chart just indicates which agenda item we're on at any one moment. We do recognize that for some folks, speaking in public might involve some anxiety or nervousness, so we do ask that there not be any demonstrations, or boos, or applause, or cat calls, and then we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Josh Rucker. From Our Lady of Grace School and Parish. Welcome.
Thank you, city council members. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Josh Rucker. I'm the principal of Our Lady of Grace School, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Our Lady of Grace School and Parish to welcome the city council and the entire community to our Our Lady of Grace Festival. For those of you that don't know, this year commemorates a very special anniversary for both our school and our parish. Our school is celebrating 50 years of serving the West Sacramento community, and our parish is celebrating its 60th year in existence. We are celebrating in grand fashion this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. with a huge festival taking place at Our Lady of Grace School campus on 1990 Linden Road at the festival. Admission is free. We have lots of food, live bands, including Mike McAllen's band will be out there, so should be a really good time.
Come anyway. Please come anyway. Don't let that be a barrier.
Well, if that doesn't entice folks, some of you sitting on the council will be in the dunk tank, so that should be quite fun as well. So, we're here tonight, and I've got some of our students passing out flyers to invite the entire community to join us on Saturday. Looking forward to a very, very big celebration, a great evening, a lot of fun, a lot of food, and just a real quick kickoff to what should be many, many more years in West Sacramento filling it with service. So, thank you guys for your time, and hope to see everybody on Saturday.
Great, thank you, Principal Rucker. We'll be there, and thanks to the students for coming tonight, and I also see there are several members of the school's board, and parents, and volunteers who are working on the festival. Thanks for being here tonight, and also for the work. This does promise to be a really great event and a good tradition in the community. So, again, the festival is this weekend at Our Lady of Grace School on Linden Road on Saturday. So please, and is there a website or anywhere else to get additional information for folks that are interested?
Is our school website www.
It's www.OLGWestSac, all one word, dot com. All right.
I could just comment too. Having gone to them, to those in the past, and my daughters, both of them graduated from OLG, are a great time. They're just a lot of fun. It's just really sort of a small-town kind of carnival and festivities that is just so wholesome and so good. It's really a good time, and anybody that goes there is going to certainly enjoy themselves.
Good. All right, thanks. We'll see y'all there on Saturday then. All right, next is Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. I don't know why it took me so long to figure this out, but our commute buses, the number 39 and 241, they only go in one direction. Like this afternoon, I stopped by a dentist's office in the 1000 block on Jefferson, and at first I was thinking there was a number 39 going into town just within a few minutes. And I got to examining the pocket schedule and realized that it only goes one direction in the morning and one direction in the evening, like the 241. And I was thinking perhaps the signage should read "AM only," weekdays only, for 39 and 241, because some people might think a bus comes by there every hour. And like I say, I just happened to look at the schedule and just, for the first time, happened to notice that where I was standing there, this side of Jackson, boy, there wasn't going to be any 39 bus coming back into town. I think what they do is go over to the port and change buses and maybe provide other peak hour service or something like that. Anyway, just a thought, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, those are our only requests on item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Development Corporation met on May 20th outside of routine, a routine update on the different properties. There was a discussion about becoming a community housing development organization at Chodo, and basically what that will allow the organization to do is access directly federal home funds and not have to go through the state. And what that's also going to mean is a potential expansion of the board. There's a number of positions on the board. A Chodo is required, for example, in the homeless advocacy community, development committee, and a couple of other positions. So, the decision hasn't been made to do it at this point, but the discussion is ongoing. I attended the Housing and Poverty Action Coalition meeting on May 26, and the issues there were mostly funding, grant requests that are coming up, and NOFA announcements. I also attended the first executive committee on the establishment of the Ten Year Homeless Plan and was appointed chair of that committee. And what I think is going to happen is the Housing Poverty Action Coalition is now, a lot of that's coming under the umbrella of the Executive Committee based on the Ten Year Homeless Plan. So, what I'll be doing is putting my efforts more toward the Executive Committee and not so much toward HPAK. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you're going through those lists now to look at that. The committee actually only has six commissioners now. The next meeting is on June 8, and the balance of the committee members will be appointed. I think all have agreed to serve on that committee. And finally, I had the opportunity to attend a Design Sacramento for Health workshop a week or so ago, and basically it was a, people in the affordable housing development community discussing how housing can be provided to homeless individuals, how affordable housing could be provided to broader segments of our society, and also concepts of how to incorporate health into general plans and into other activities of the city. And actually, West Sacramento is doing, I think, all of the right things to make West Sacramento a healthy place for its residents, including bringing food to neighbors. We've got the Urban Food Stand now, so that's helping in that area. We're also looking at, I know staff is working with the Yellow County, or the West Sacramento Health Collaborative, in what can we put in our general plan to include healthy elements? And that has the effect of institutionalizing a lot of these concepts. And also our development here, we're focusing on high-density development with walkable spaces and that type of thing, where, you know, you actually have, people have the ability to walk and exercise around just getting into a car. So, that was it.
All right, I apologize. I had just one, the Seco transportation committee meeting is tomorrow. The key issue that's going to be up is the Tiger 2 funding rounds. This is a smaller round of funding that follows on what the federal government awarded in March across the country for big transportation projects, basically. And so we're coming up with our, you know, preferred priority list for the region for those dollars. It is potentially a source of funding for the streetcar project if we aren't successful in getting the Urban Circulator grant, which we're still hoping will be announced Monday. We have no confirmation, but all the detective work seems to point in that direction. So the Tiger 2 could be a potential source for that. I mean, the downsides for that project are, if it doesn't get the Urban Circulator award, it will just go on through that review process and not been as competitive as some of the others. So that's one potential drawback in the Tiger 2. And the other is that, you know, there are hardly any other, hardly any projects in California got funded in the first round of Tiger, just four projects in the whole state. One of them was in West Sacramento. So, there'll be a lot of pressure inside the federal government to spread some of these grant awards to other parts of the country and not rain down all of the federal government's stimulus funding on West Sacramento. So, we'll have to see. The project that is probably slightly more competitive, and that we'll be talking about tomorrow, is a million dollars for the countywide rail relocation that we've been talking about, not the west-side relocation, rail relocation, but the project that we've been working on with the county and Woodland as well. So that's a potential project in that pot, and the rest of the county didn't get any money in Tiger 1, so that might be a possibility. Woodland is still pressing for $44 million for the I-5 113 interchange project, so if they continue with that, that will probably take the rail relocation one off the table, and there's pretty much zero chance that the 113 project would get funded, so it would just mean that there would be no really competitive project here. But the Seco staff's going to be recommending that Watt US-50 project be the number one for the region. But it's a lot less money than it was in the first round, so this is a potential funding source for us, is just because of the money that we were able to secure for the port, it's probably, it's not a large opportunity, but we'll continue to pursue it.
Mr. Kristoff.
Just a quick, I had a West Sac JPA meeting a couple weeks ago, and it was about the HDR Engineering Contract that we are going to hear on Agenda Item 11, and I'm pretty sure Mike Bissett's going to give an overview on it, and so that was the only thing I needed to report on.
All right, then with that, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The city manager has requested that we continue items 4 and 6 to the next council meeting. So without objection, that'll be the order, so we have items 2 through 9.
Just to comment on 6 before we do that, it's come to my attention that the state, the county, they do have, there's warehouses and things here in West Sacramento that have different furnitures and things like that, and I was just wondering if staff had looked at that, because this is a little expensive item, especially for these days. And so I didn't know if they did, but we could just pass that on to Andre or Bob, and they need to maybe take a look and see if there's a way to save a few bucks.
Okay. All right, are there any questions or items to remove on the consent agenda?
Just a question on 7.
Question on 7?
Okay, wait.
Okay, item 7 is consideration of approval of plans and specifications in contract award for the central storage tank flood floor rehabilitation project. Mr. Mayor Potemvegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so Greg. I can't help but wonder, the engineer's original estimate of $100,000, yet Olympus and Associates came in at a third of that, and I just, it makes me nervous to see something so low, and it looks pretty basic in terms of what the work is required, but I just wondered if you could help me understand how there's so much difference between the original estimate.
Well, we were a little puzzled as well, and we did verify with the contractor that they will, in fact, do the work in accordance with all the plans and specifications, and they've verified to us in writing that they will follow the work as outlined, and they're confident they can do it within their price.
So can you, what was, I mean, obviously you guys reviewed the bid, and I, what was, how do you make up, where did the other $60,000 go that we thought were going to be needed to make the work go?
The original estimate was based on, from the company that did the inspection, and they, that was from their original report, and that was the extent that we originally thought. As you can see from the bid prices, there was a significant range, and some at the estimate, near $100,000, but there were quite a few that were half of that and below.
Wow, okay, all right. Great, thank you.
It's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mayor Potemvegas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. Our time set agenda, item 10, public hearing on reported Measure K revenue and disbursements. You're not Miss Hayden. Mr. Sharma.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I am Nitesh Sharma with the City Finance Department. One of the provisions of Measure K is that the city will annually publish a report to the community following a public hearing. In your packet, we have included a proposed report that provides a revenue and a detailed expenditure information on how the money was originally allocated, revenues from other sources, and how much we have spent to date. Over the past seven years, we spent a total of $37.5 million, which includes revenues from other sources. Of this, 70% of the revenues were allocated to transportation-related programs and capital infrastructure. The annual report also includes specific information. For example, the city provided 14,144 miles of street sweeping annually. The city also provides annual financial support to the county of Yellow Library, and in return, the library is open four hours on Sunday and maintains the programming and other services to the community. In addition, over 500 children benefit from Measure K-funded after-school program. In February 2003, the city council passed Resolution 02-58, providing guidance to staff regarding the spending of half cent of the sales tax proceed. The sales tax revenue is split 50/50 between a base allocation and a capital allocation. In your packet, we have included a scorecard that demonstrates that staff has adhered to council's direction. The scorecard is broken into base annual allocation and a capital 10-year allocation. Regarding base allocation, we allocate funds on a as-needed basis. For example, you may note, in the current year, we have allocated funding for the operations of the library. In addition, the funding for the water rate reduction is greater than originally anticipated. This is because of the volume of new residential water connection between 2001 and 2007, which receives a $3 Measure K credit on the utility bill. In capital allocation, we assigned the full allocation at the beginning of the program instead of annually. This allowed us the flexibility to advance fund projects, most particularly the road rehab projects, which is in its final stage. We are planning to publish this annual report in the local newspaper, The News Ledger, and also publish on the city's website by June 30. The purpose of this public hearing is to address any questions or concerns before this report is published. That completes my report, and I would like to return it to you, Mr. Mayor, for any questions or comments that the council may have, and open up the public hearing.
Are there questions for Mr. Sharma at this time? All right, so then we're going to open the public hearing. We have no requests to speak on item 10, but does anyone wish to address the council? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing on item 10. Any further discussion?
We were one of the, now virtually every city in Yellow County has one of these special option local sales taxes. We were the, one of the first in the state to move forward with this option, and the voters here in West Sacramento adopted it overwhelmingly. And this was, although right now it seems like an obvious choice, this was at a time before the big changes in development and a lot of the major projects. Rayleigh Field had just recently been opened, and it represented a real vote of confidence in the future of the city by the voters. And as a result, we've been able to make some significant capital changes in the city in terms of parks and facilities, a lot of road rehabilitation. Virtually, virtually everyone in the city has seen the street out front of their house rehabilitated. It would not have happened without these, without this measure. Everyone has been paying lower water rates as a result of this measure. A lot of the funds from this come from outsiders, because it's folks who are shopping at IKEA or at Walmart or at Wild West Feed, you know, at local stores, and so it's been a net benefit to this community and to the residents and taxpayers here of significance, of a lot of significance. And the reports, you know, is what we committed to at the beginning. We said we're going to be very transparent about how these funds are spent. The voter proposition didn't say you have to spend this much money on this and this much money on that, but we said our intention is to really work on using these funds to advance the amenities in the city, so that we have great neighborhoods and places throughout the city. You don't have to live in a brand-new development to have a good library. You don't have to move out of an old neighborhood into a new neighborhood in order to get your street fixed, and that's what Measure K and Measure J were all about, and a lot of that work has been done. And so many on this council were here at the time, and I'm very proud of what has occurred. This report, I think, demonstrates that we've paid very close attention to what we promised at the beginning, and that we've stuck very closely to those allocations that we said. We weren't bound and stoned by them, you know, as new needs arose, we said, let's take advantage of those opportunities, and so that's why we have spent a little bit more on police and fire than, actually quite a bit more than we had anticipated originally, but that occurred in part because we didn't build a light rail line. Instead, we said, let's focus on a streetcar project, because that's going to cost half as much. And in the follow-up to Measure K, the voter said, that's a good idea, we're going to use the next Measure K for that purpose, along with flood control. So, this report, I think, is another verification that we've done exactly what the city and the community said that they wanted in the adoption of the original Measure J and K, and it's been invaluable. Without these resources, the community would be much worse off, and our existing budget situation would be far, far, far worse.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yes, yeah, Measure J and K has really done what it was supposed to do, and as the mayor alluded, it's really taken care of some of the amenities for our neighborhoods, and it's done a lot of things with our roads. I think everybody has seen that. I think the last real segment to come is Sacramento Avenue, and we should see that started this year. So, I mean, I think that the voters were wise when they supported this, and they were also wise when they continued with U and V, because there are some other issues that have arisen since this. And one of the things that makes me really happy about this is the transparency. We said, when we put it on the ballot, that every year we would give the citizens a snapshot, give them a looksee at exactly where all those monies have gone and what they've gone for, and we have that. And so, I hope, is this going to go in City Lights or anything like that? How does, how does the public get a copy if they want a copy of exactly where the monies are going?
This is going to be published on our city website also.
On the website, okay, okay. And, you know, if there are some people that don't have access to a computer or anything like that, I'm sure that if they went to City Finance, City Finance could put together this five or six-page document that shows where those dollars went.
And a copy will be in the library, that will be available for four hours on Sundays?
Yeah, open for four hours on Sunday.
Thank you. Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe emphasize, one of the aspects of this is our flexibility to help fund the operation of a streetcar system. I think one of the things that's going to pull us out of this recession is going to be development and more people moving in, and really, we've said in the past, the projects we've approved in the Bridge District, that it's those types of developments that's going to allow people to come in, offices built, and actually start generating some of the sales tax. Part of the problem with a streetcar system is if, it's always a cost of operating. It's a lot of, particularly when you have a new system in a new area where you don't have the ridership, so you initially are going to have, you know, cars that aren't that full. So, you know, this is going to provide the flexibility to get that going, and particularly when we've got the grant application in place, we're going to be able to move very quickly on it because of this, and the funds would be available when we need them.
The only thing I'd point out from the report is, you know, I think the display on the staff board's really helpful in terms of showing that accountability. Because it shows the max, I don't, there shouldn't be any misunderstanding. It's $117,500 less than the max that we authorized for spending on the library. But we are, we did spend over, the library amount for all these categories was in a range. If we spent at the max of everything, then we wouldn't have enough money. And we spent within that range for the library. We spent well above the minimum, just not over the maximum, and that was because the library, we didn't fund Sunday service until the library was actually built and open, and so we had a couple of years of savings that we might have otherwise spent. So, it doesn't reflect in any way a reduction in the commitment that these funds have had for improved services at the library.
All right, then, so if there's no other questions or comments, is there a motion on the recommendation to receive and file the report and direct the director to publish it? It's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries unanimously. Item 11 is approval of contract modifications with HDR Engineering Incorporated for services to support the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program. Mr. Bissett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight for your consideration is the approval of contract modifications with HDR Engineering for services to support the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program. The flood protection program is moving forward in a positive direction. However, the environment that we work in... However, the environment that we work in continues to present numerous challenges to us. Due to the nature of the work itself, constructing improvements in a subsurface environment, working with our partners, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Department of Water Resources, and the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, and in the current regulatory environment, changes in scope and direction are often necessary in order to take projects through preliminary design, design, permitting, and into construction. Public safety is the number-one priority for the program and for our partners, and the predominant reason for the proposed changes tonight is public safety. We've had numerous successes recently that I want to share with you tonight. Number one, the draft environmental document is out for public review. It was released last Friday, May 28th, and will hold a open house on June 29th, and the document is out for a 45-day review period. So this is a major accomplishment for the program. It's for environmental analysis for the entire program, and it will provide certification for our two EIP projects. And it'll be a document that we will tear off in the future. The process took much longer than anticipated due to changing regulations, numerous backchecks, changes in SEQA NIPA guidance on climate change and air quality analysis parameters, and regulatory agency coordination challenges. Despite that, we're very excited to have the document hit the street, and it's going to allow us to keep on schedule with our projects. Item two, last Friday, the state officially became a partner in the general reevaluation report. The Central Valley Flood Protection Board passed the feasibility cost-share amendment and approved our local funding cost-share agreement with the state. So we're very excited about that. That process took a lot longer than we expected. We've been working on it since last February, but due to the state's budget issues, it took longer. But now that we're here, they're a funding partner with us, and we've continued to move that study forward. So that's a major accomplishment. The Sacramento Bank Protection Setback Levy Project in Southport is moving forward also. The project will go into the Army Corps' contracts group this month, and they hope to award a construction contract in August, and they'll soon be in construction till later this year. So that's been a major accomplishment for the program. And as a reminder, that project has no local match, and I estimate the total cost of that project between $8 and $10 million from the environmental mitigation that had to occur through design and then construction. So that's a major accomplishment. That project was very close to going sideways on us. There was some geotechnical concerns that the Army Corps' group had, and HDR, we asked HDR to step in and help facilitate that process, and they were able to successfully work through all the concerns that the geotechnical engineers at the Corps had, and we were able to keep that project moving forward. So that was a huge success for us. Also, HDR provided a geotechnical analysis for the project to ensure that that project included under seepage and through-seepage mitigation. With that analysis that we provided, we were able to get a slurry wall incorporated into the project, and that slurry wall alone is estimated to be about $1.5 million. So we took our money and we multiplied it. So it was, that's a huge success. Also, our early implementation project designs are moving forward. We completed 90% designs. We're coordinating with the state and the Army Corps on their reviews, also the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, and we're expecting to issue 100% design plans later this summer. For those projects, we will be taking 408 and 104 applications to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board in July, and that will help facilitate the Army Corps' involvement in reviewing those projects with us and giving us the approvals for us to move forward and into construction. We've held several public meetings on the Rivers Project. We actually held a meeting with the Rivers Homeowners Group last night, and we held one about a month ago with Bright Broderick Community Action Network, and we've received positive feedback in those meetings, and that we'll be able to incorporate into our design plans. Funding from the state for the EIP projects is, keeps occurring according to schedule, and we're working hard to process a final payment before they get into their blackout period this month. So project funding is moving forward, and we anticipate bidding these projects later this year and entering construction in the spring of next year. The four major categories that necessitate the need for contract modifications that are proposed this evening are, number one is to improve project reliability and performance. The Board of Senior Consultants process that has been incorporated into our program as a requirement of the 408 process through the Army Corps. It provides for safety assurance reviews. It also has increased our costs for our consultants, the time spent dealing with our Board of Senior Consultants and answering questions and getting their input into our program. So those were unanticipated costs, but we believe that they're well worth the value that we've put into it. Number two is to reduce risk during construction. We need to improve the accuracy of our subsurface characterization, which will help us reduce potential for change orders when we get into construction. A lot of that is the geotechnical analysis work that we have to go out there and supplement that from what we have to date. And those requirements have come through the Board of Senior Consultants' recommendations and also through the Army Corps and Department of Water Resources. They're asking for additional geotechnical explorations. Number three is to reduce construction costs. The further we can define the subsurface materials, there's a potential for onsite material reuse, which will lessen the amount of borrow material that we have to bring into the projects. And we're also, we're conducting further analysis on the Rivers Project. I believe I've told the board previously that we've truncated the Rivers Project to incorporate additional designs to ensure that we're going to construct the proper mitigation for the area in front of the waterside homes. So we've conducted further analysis on a potential relief well option, and that analysis is still underway. But we're hoping that it will prove fruitful for us from an economic standpoint. Lastly, we look to reduce local project cost-sharing. Number one, as I just previously mentioned, is the SAC Bank Setback Levy Project. That is a huge win for us, and the amount of money we've invested and that we're going to get in the back end is three or fourfold. We're also looking to incorporate a project in Southport into the Delta Levy Stability Program. If we're able to successfully incorporate that project, we'll be able to achieve federal investment in our system much earlier than it will be through the GRR process. So we've had to invest some monies to try to incorporate that project and achieve federal investment early. And lastly, to identify and coordinate with federal and state programs to reduce our cost share, we've identified other programs in the Army Corps and the Department of Water Resources, and we're trying to tap into whatever programs we can to help facilitate and move forward improvements in a quicker timeframe with a reduced local share. Having the local partner be the lead on flood protection projects is a relatively new concept to our federal and state partners. As such, the processes to review, approve, and permit our projects are continuously evolving. However, this process allows us to better manage schedule, costs, and the projects as a whole. It makes us take the lead on the program and be able to steer it in the direction we want it to go. Controlling costs is essential to the success of our program. Due to the complexity of the program and in order to manage costs, city management long ago implemented weekly steering meetings that include the city manager, public works director, and the West Safka general manager. And a lot of these changes and scope changes and looking at other programs to help lower our cost share and tap into other resources are discussed on a weekly basis, and decisions are made to move forward in the proper direction. These proposed contract modifications have been extensively evaluated and negotiated with the consultant. It has also been presented to the JPA Board last month, and they were approved. Finally, the costs that we're proposing tonight will be included in our existing EIP funding agreement with the state. So a lot of these costs are being mandated by the federal government and the state government to help improve the quality of our projects, and they will be cost-shared with the state and ultimately with the federal government. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bissett. Mr. Kristoff, do you have comments on this?
No, just the only comments I would have is the JPA Board. We heard this, and I alluded to it a little earlier. There were certainly a number of questions, but I think in the long run, when we have the opportunity to possibly speed things up in terms of constructing levees, we have the opportunity to have some cost savings, and those cost savings could be long-term. But still, at the same time, it would be something that's very beneficial to West Sacramento because, as all of us know, and all of you know, as we get in with dealing with the Corps and with DWR and all these other federal and state agency, things change all the time. And so if you're in the middle of a project and somebody makes a change, it's very, very costly to make those changes and sort of switch gears, if you will. I think that with this contract extension, I think that we will have just a much better handle and be able to sort of keep track of all of the different new proposals that may come out and really take care long-term. This may be a real cost-effective measure as far as the city of West Sacramento is concerned. So I, for one, am going to support this agenda item.
All right, we do have one request from the public to speak on this item. It's by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. William Lowell again for the record. I think it was a couple of weeks or so ago, there was a pretty good-sized article with the pictures of the Sacramento River and the levees, and it talked about this subject, and it talked about the federal law now requires removal of the trees, and they might consider some kind of an exception for us because taking out the trees would, of course, disrupt the levees and therefore our flood protection. And so I was wondering, why don't we consider trimming the trees so that they don't have near the wind resistance during the storms? But also, as I come across the river on a bus, I notice some of those trees growing close to the water, you see some of the roots right there in the water when the water levy is low and water level is low. And so if we could trim those trees, maybe we could save them and keep our levees stronger. And I thought I heard my predecessor say something about brownouts, and it reminds me of about a month ago when I was over in Woodland at 25 North Cottonwood. And it was after those four little kids perished in that fire in Woodland, or not Woodland, but Fairfield. And here in the waiting room, just in front of me, was this big sign, "Do you have trouble paying your utility bills?" So apparently, the county has a program to prevent people from having their power turned off and therefore using candles and stuff like that causing fires. So, but especially apartment buildings where you have one unit that has their power turned off and is therefore subjecting not only that unit, but all those other units to potential fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, then we'll return to the council for their questions or discussion. Mr. Beers?
Yeah, Michael. First of all, you guys just do fantastic work, and HDR does fantastic work, and I think the fact that we've started so long ago gives us some expertise. But I did have to smile a little bit when Bill said, "Speed the process up," because it just seems like that's a very relative term. The question I have is, do you see, in particular, I'm worried about the Corps with all of the issues going on in the Gulf. Are we seeing any degradation of services or response time? The part about this that I always worry about is all these control agencies, there's nobody there that ever has to pull the trigger. It seems like you always just have to back them down till they don't have any more questions. And it seems that we, somebody needs to be in a position that says, you know, because we've added the Board of, you know, Engineers or this new board, so now we have to spend another $75,000 just to keep them informed. But I'm just concerned, when is the trigger get pulled that things will finally happen? I mean, we're on a schedule, but do other people see that they have an obligation to deliver by those timeframes too? Or can they always just ask for one more piece of information? How do we control that piece of it? That's what I'm worried about.
Well, we've been building up strong relationships within the Army Corps and the Department of Water Resources and Central Valley Board, and we're continuously communicating our schedule with them. We meet with them continuously also. I have not detected any change in their staffing since the issues in the Gulf, but we continuously monitor that. I think it's just coordination with them and keeping a continuous dialogue with them, letting them know what we need, when we need it, and trying to ensure that we get what we need in the timeframe. So we're working very closely with them.
No, and I know that, and maybe I just need to express it, that it gets, one of the things I always wonder is, you know, can all the paper that we're producing be used for fill on these levees so that we've got some material? Because we've got a ton of paper here that, and sometimes you just wonder whether it's all going. So I appreciate your effort, and I appreciate HDR in particular. They've done a good job for the city, so.
It's a lot of money. You know, in the context of other actions that we're taking tonight, it especially seems like a lot of money. But I think we recognize it's, this is as part of a $500 million levy improvement program. And, you know, post-Katrina, our chambers were flooded with folks, pardon the pun, was flooded with folks saying, "This should be your only priority for the rest of your natural lives, is to fix this problem." And although the public outcry has largely dissipated, I mean, except folks when they get the notice about, from FEMA, that they should purchase flood insurance, the, all the anxiety and stuff has largely faded away, which is a good thing. I mean, we are on it and trying to take care of this problem, but it is really important that we do it. I mean, that we, this is going to be, we're in a long-term commitment to make this happen. This is, there's no quick fix. We're going to have to keep, and we're going to keep at it, and we're going to keep running into all these kinds of challenges that you've outlined. And HDR has been a key partner, and we're going to need their help. We can't, we can't do this stuff internally, and there's no one else to do the work externally. So I'm supportive of it. I, you know, I know for folks who are looking at our agenda or watching at home and heard us talk about how we're going to find, you know, a couple million dollars to fill our budget hole, and now we have a $1.7 million proposal here for an outside contractor on the flood program. It is exactly as you say in terms of how it's financed with the overall levy dollars, but it is hypercritical that we get this done, both for public, both for public safety because the improvements to those, to the levees need to get done to assure the maximum level of flood protection, but also in the immediate term. If we don't show this, exactly this sort of commitment and progress, there's a very real chance that economic development in our community will be shut down directly by the federal government. So it's absolutely critical. There is nothing more important that's on our agenda at the moment. So I appreciate the work that's been done and all the work that Mr. Kristoff's been doing on the JPA with all, with all of our partners, and I'm definitely supportive of moving this item forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kristoff?
I would move that we approve the contract modifications with HDR Engineering for services to support the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program. Authorize the city manager, who is designated, to take any and all actions reasonable and necessary to complete the work described in the contracts, including the approval of minor contract amendments. That, in the opinion of the city manager, will not materially alter the purpose of the contract nor increase the total compensation due under the contracts more than 10% or $170,000.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mayor Protem Viegas. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. Thank you. Item 12 is consideration of approval of plans and specifications and award of construction contract for the Bridge District Phase One Infrastructure Improvements Project. Mr. Pascoe?
This is another pretty momentous occasion. We're bringing you the first major construction contract within the Bridge District and also likely the largest public construction contract within the Bridge District. likely the largest public construction contract within the Bridge District. It's the result of a couple of years of effort. You've taken quite a number of actions to get us here, and it'll result in probably the most visible, physical, tangible improvement in the Bridge District since Rayleigh Field was constructed. We completed our plans and advertised this project for bid in both the local newspaper, the Newsletter, and regionally, and then through the plan and bid houses that serve the major contractors throughout the region. We did some outreach with local companies, there's, through the Chamber of Commerce, there's not really any West Sacramento-based construction companies that take on this kind of magnitude of project, but we did require that all, the successful bidder provide us with a menu, sort of the local content of their bid. We received a total of five bids, and the, after review, determined that the lowest responsible, responsive bidder was Tykert Construction, and we're recommending award to them. There's a difference of approximately $4.3 million between what the engineer's estimate was and what that bid is. Will, this is very good news.
In our favor.
We anticipate, we do have one major component of the Bridge District improvements that we hadn't fully funded, and that's a water tank. And we'll review this with you through the CIP process next month, the capital improvement budget, but we think that this is a wonderful opportunity to be able to fund a critical improvement that without that water tank, we won't actually be able to build or occupy any housing within the Bridge District. So we need to be able to deliver that as well. Some of the unusual features of this construction contact are the inclusion of permeable pavers in all of the sidewalks throughout the Bridge District, an infiltration layer below them that will allow most of the onsite drainage to actually stay within the site. So we'll have a redundant drainage system that will carry sort of extreme flows off the site, but most of the drainage will be handled on, within the boundaries of the Bridge District. We're also paving all the streets with concrete. That's one of the features that'll make it look really distinctive, and it'll also help us meet the lead neighborhood designation for the Bridge District. There's also special treatments at the corners, including granite pavers and the bronze street names that we included as an ad alternate, and that was another thing that we were able to accomplish with that savings I mentioned. We've got some good cost control features in place. We have a, in addition to the staff oversight on this project, we have a construction management firm in place. We think that Tykert brings some real advantages in that they manufacture a lot of their own materials, the DI's and some of the pipe, they have their own AB and AC plants, so they're able to deliver a lot of the major, big materials that we're talking about at a good price. The funding sources for this are, it's a combination of the State Prop 1C grant, the developer contributions through the Community Facilities District, that was on the consent agenda, and redevelopment tax increment funding. Toby Wong, the project engineer, and I are available to answer any questions about this. And we do have one minor change to the recommended action, and that's to designate the city manager or his designee to grant him the authority for change orders, up to 10% of the contract amount.
Right, are there questions? Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Marina, we've been going over this for quite some time, and I know some of us up here probably don't need it, but I think for purposes of the public understanding exactly what we're doing with, which is, the majority of this money is, does come from the Prop 1C from a couple of years back. Can you kind of walk through what, at the end of this construction project, what's going to look different? I mean, I think folks are looking for that sort of visible stuff. A lot of it's going to be underground, so you're not going to see it, so it's going to tee it up for the next project, but we keep saying that. So what's going to look different from either the freeway or when you're going to Rayleigh Field?
You have, you have an illustration in your, in the board packet, and Chris, if you, we can maybe put that up. I didn't prepare a slide, but I can maybe broadcast that. What you'll see that's different is an entirely different street network. That'll be the most obvious thing. There'll be, the two major streets, Riverfront and Fifth Street, will be connected and improved as through streets all the way from Tower Bridge Gateway on the north down to Highway 50, and the Pioneer Bridge approaches on the south end. And then there'll be a number of the cross streets improved throughout there. You'll see park improvements in Garden Park, and you'll see a Riverfront Trail extending the length of the Riverfront, again, between the Tower Bridge and the Pioneer Bridge. There's going to be a bunch of under, you know, some not-so-sexy things, but sewer lift station and storm drain outfall, and all of the basic utility improvements will be placed in those streets. You'll see a lot of landscaping, you'll see the finish improvements on all the sidewalks and the streets throughout the Bridge District. And as you mentioned, it will be, we're really teeing things up for the housing projects that we also committed to delivering through the Prop 1C grant.
What's the timeframe that you're looking at?
We're looking at a groundbreaking event, probably in the first week of July, and start of construction immediately thereafter, and then we are committed to completing construction on this project by the fall of 2011. So we're looking at about a 15 to 18-month construction period.
Great, thank you. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Marina, it's, I'm glad to see that we continue to reach out to local contractors on these jobs. Would it be possible just to report back to us as we move through this on the subs that we can, you know, so we know that there's some local content going into this as we move forward?
We did ask Tykert to identify their local subs for us, and they have a total of three that they identified. There's Vickers Concrete Sawing, Sunstate Equipment for some of the equipment rental they'll be doing, and then most likely a West Sacramento supplier for the generator and the lift station. And, you know, we can sort of report back about what the dollar value on those, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, if there's any changes or additions or things like that. Thanks.
All right, we have one request to speak on this. It's from Mr. Lowell. Okay, Mr. Lowell passes. Okay.
And, I mean, you put the map up, although it's hard to see from here even, much less, I'm sure, at home. I mean, the district's going to look entirely different. I mean, it will, it'll, in some respects, it'll look like when you go to a new housing subdivision in a new neighborhood, you know, anywhere, except they'll be, it'll be slapped right on top of an old industrial area, and Rayleigh Field will be in your field division. But also, even before the housing's actually in place, it will create places to walk and bike, streets paved with, with concrete, not asphalt, that will open up that area for, for folks to visit and sort of see the potential, and the parks and the landscape will open that up. So in addition to the projects that are already planned and approved and financed, it will, it will, I think, you know, open up, for all the folks who are visiting Rayleigh Field or who can look down from the freeway, it's really going to open up the sense of possibility for people who might make investments, folks who want to open up businesses or move to that, to that, to that district. It's going to be really powerful, especially in conjunction with the other improvements that are happening simultaneously with respect to the Riverwalk Trail and the improvements to complete Tower Bridge Gateway between Iron Works and the Tower Bridge itself. So it's, it's going to be a massive transformation of that, of that entire area. Even though it doesn't sound sexy, it's going to be really quite impressive, I think. And again, it's a lot, it is a lot of money, but we were one of the, we and the city of Sacramento did extremely well in competing statewide for these Proposition 1C funds, and very few places in California got that. We did, we were the envy of a lot of other urban places, and the developers, I think, recognize that, even though it's not a great economy, they recognize that it's important for them to make investments, for no other reason than make sure that we can capture those state dollars. So it's really good to see this project moving forward. It will help some local companies and folks who work locally to keep working and make sure that West Sacramento remains economically competitive and well-positioned for the, for the economic turnaround.
Further questions or discussion? Is there a motion on item 12?
Mr. Mayor? I'd move that we, the plans and specifications as bid for the Bridge District Phase One Infrastructure Improvement Project, award the construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, responsible bidder, Tykert Construction, in the amount of $14,874.
Eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-four.
Eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and 75 cents. Got to get the cents in there. And grant the Director of Public Works or his designee to issue a contract change orders up to 10% or 1.4 in the value of the contract issued monthly progress payments from, to the contractor.
And you meant by Director of Public Works, you meant the city manager, correct?
And it says Public Works, and we have a memo here that says it's the city manager.
All right, it's been moved and seconded then. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. Great work, thank you. Item 13 is continued discussion of budget plan and consideration of proposed modification to reduction plans for the Police, Fire and Police Departments. Mr. Ross?
Thank you. Good evening. Two weeks ago, the council entertained a variety of proposals to bring the city's budget in line with its resources. Those involved generally large-scale cuts and, in a few instances, enhanced revenues. The council approved the basic plan with the exception of police and fire. We're back here this evening to review the progress over the last two weeks in addressing those issues. Council was concerned that, they wanted to see if there were ways to keep layoffs to a minimum in those two departments, see if they could continue to provide enhanced services. And so over the last two weeks, we've been meeting with the associations to try to achieve that, and I think we have some good solutions to that problem. I want to start with Police Department. The POA has agreed to the basic plan that's included in your staff report. That plan would retain two community service officers that were previously proposed for elimination, one property and evidence technician that was proposed for elimination, and would retain on an interim or temporary basis, a code enforcement officer who we believe that will have a good chance of maintaining through attrition or a retirement that's contemplated in the next 90 days. So the enhancement there is, I think, substantial and along the lines that the council had directed. The consequences aren't without significance, however. It does involve elimination of a sergeant, that's a second sergeant proposed for elimination. It also reduces the amount of money available for part-time police, and it reduces the amount of overtime in the budget. I'm going to go back and cover those points, at least a couple of those points, in some greater detail. The overtime is being adjusted to reflect the strong quality controls we put in place last year. So in the, in the current year, projecting through the end of June, we anticipate that we will save enough money that it, that this reduction going forward would still provide an enhanced level of budget compared to what our, what our actual expenditures were in this current year. This was, I'm told by the police chief, this was a typical year, not an excessive year, but a typical year, and this actually, this level of budgeting would provide more than that level. So we don't think that that's an unnecessary risk in this instance. It's a, it's a dramatic cut, but it's a cut that's based on the actual practice that we've been able to experience over the last year. With respect to one other issue that I know was of concern to the council, and that was the availability of crime analysis capability, we are proposing that a position be eliminated that has provided that service in the past, but we're not proposing that there be no crime analysis. In fact, the, with the capabilities that we have through technology that have developed over recent times, and the capacity that we may have on the basis of being able to restore some of the CSO positions and other strategies, we believe we can continue to provide the level of crime analysis necessary to undertake the police department's work. So with that, we have an agreement with POA in terms of, this is not a formal agreement, but they've endorsed this, this solution. It did not involve them having to go back to their membership for any vote or any activity because they didn't actually provide any cost concessions. This was an arrangement that involved the management in the department and the negotiating team from the union and the HR and administrative staffs working over a extended period of time to come up to what we think is a good solution to the concerns. With respect to Fire...
Toby, before we go there...
Yes?
Could you talk a little bit about the part-time positions? Because I know that there's still some funding that's going to be available and it's not completely...
Yes, there will be about $50,000 worth of money available for part-time police, so it is not, it's not reduced to zero. We will still have that capacity, but not to the same extent that we had previously.
Okay, thank you.
With respect to Fire...
I'm sorry, Toby, if I could, before you go on Fire, so we don't leave it. And maybe you can help me with this, or maybe the chief can. With the positions that are proposed for, for reduction, the two administrative aides, the two administrative analysts, and then the youth counselor, we would be remiss without mentioning the quality of service that we get out of our police department. We would also be remiss to not mention the fact that we hire experts to manage our organizations to give us their expert opinions about what ought to happen during these difficult times, as difficult as it is to make these kinds of cuts. And as we look at these, we, and I don't actually want to glance over any of this because I think we all know the seriousness of it. What's being proposed this evening for police, and I may, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but you're shifting gears to Fire, so I don't know if you have a process, Mr. Mayor, you had, thought I were, should we comment on...
I mean, we're going to hear it from the city manager on both Police and Fire, then we have requests for public comment.
Okay.
I mean, after any technical questions, and then we're going to return to the council for the overview comments.
You know, in that case, then I'll sit tight with my comments then.
Mr. Johansson?
Toby, just on, so we can kind of tie up the Police and the Crime Analyst position, what is that, what's the cost of that a year?
It's, I think, about $115,000.
$115,000? Okay, thanks.
Okay. The Fire negotiations were similar in, in terms of duration and number of meetings. The approach was somewhat different because of the different nature of the two departments. Really, Fire has police and equipment, and that's about it. They don't have the range of activities that the police department has. And so in trying to save positions and also to prevent layoffs, really, we needed to look at what the firefighters could provide. And eventually, we developed a program that would save three positions, essentially for the period or duration of the agreement, which is two years, and additionally save two other positions for the period to the end of the year, where we anticipate there will be some retirements and allow us to avoid layoffs in, in that whole department. If we're fortunate, we, and get to a point of having retirements, then we would not experience any layoffs, although there would be a reduction in the number of positions. There are additional factors in this agreement, and the council is being asked to approve the side letter along with this budget plan that includes factors such as the, the extension of the current contract for two years, so there wouldn't be any negotiation that would normally be scheduled for this year. That would not occur at this time, it would be two years hence. There are commitments for manning levels and operational performance that I think achieve many of the desires and expectations that were expressed at the public hearing last week. And I think this, this also represents a real commitment on the part of the, the staff of the Fire Department to giving back to solve this problem. So they, they have basically, in effect, reduced their compensation so that the balance of the force could be kept in place. So with that, the actual recommendation that we're making is that you approve the budget plan, including the side letter for Fire, that you approve the budget plan and the recommendations for the police department, and that you authorize the city manager to implement this program, including any actions that may be warranted in terms of deferring action if circumstances warrant. action if circumstances warrant. With that, I'd be open for any questions.
Are there questions for the city manager at this time? All right, we have two requests to speak on the item. The first is by Josh Hurley, the Vice President of the West Sacramento Firefighters Association.
Good evening. Uh, we, on behalf of the West Sacramento Fire Association, we want to thank you guys for the time and for the opportunity over the last two weeks to sit down with Phil. It's been trying, but I think we've, we've reached some good numbers, and hopefully, with that being said, we can move forward to bigger and brighter days. Hopefully, we can continue to analyze and look into some of the points that have been brought forth in the, you know, in terms of cost savings to the city, revenues, potential revenues in the future, and, and we can make a, a, a valiant effort at hoping not to deprive the citizens of West Sacramento in the future, or decrease our level of fire protection for the future. So thank you very much.
All right, Josh, thank you. And Bill Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Willie Lowell, again for the record. I did not hear anybody say anything about Fire Station 45, whether or not it was gonna stay open or whether it was gonna be closed. And so I, I ask you if you can answer that question. Thank you.
All right, I, I know we can answer that, the direct question, because we answered it last week as well. Fire Station 45 is not closing, was never proposed to close. The proposal with respect to Engine 45, the operation of that particular piece of equipment and by that, by that crew in the department, in, in Station 45, that, that, those positions are proposed to be retained and, and by this agreement, so. Right, so those are now the public comments? I, I personally want to thank the, both, the, the leadership and the members of both of the associations that have worked over the last two weeks with the city manager and with Mr. Wright. I'm trying to come up with solutions. These are difficult, uh, they've been difficult across all the departments, but I know the associations, you know, internally and with us have their own set of challenges to, to work through, and we wouldn't be in this position this evening, which is avoiding the worst of the reductions. We're still making significant reductions in every department, including police and fire, I think, as we talked about, and two weeks ago, when, when these two departments are such a large proportion of the, of the city's, but, um, general fund budget, there's no way to make zero cuts there, even if you cut, even if you were to eliminate all other of the general fund departments, including the city council. You just can't get there. It's mathematically impossible, and I, and, and so, but it doesn't make it any easier to have to make those cuts and reductions. And so the overall magnitude of them, I think the council and the city manager have worked hard to make sure that public safety is the number one priority, and these, those two departments and their budgets, not just this year, but in last year's reductions as well, reflect that, and they also reflect that those departments depend on, and we all depend as a city, on the rest of the city operations too. That water, water has to come out of the, the fire hydrants, and, and so the public work staff is essential. And when a, when a, a police officer gets injured and we need to, we need to trigger the, the health benefits, the human resources analyst doesn't get a lot of glory, but is necessary to make sure that, that our folks get taken care of, that the whole team at the city is a part of the success of the community and part of the safety of the community. And, uh, so we want to make sure that we take a balanced approach, but the, and, and as I think has been said, particularly the reductions that are proposed for individual people, many of whom are here this evening, either layoffs or reductions in time are difficult, and you haven't heard us at the council go through them in detail, because frankly, that isn't our job. Our job is to make sure first and foremost that, that, that our core performance measures for the community are, are satisfied, that if, that if a citizen calls and needs a, and needs an emergency help, that the, that the fire department is there, firefighter is there, and that if they, if they are, if they experience a robbery or burglary, that the police department is there and able to provide that service. And we hold the city manager and the police, and the chief of police responsible for those outcomes, but we don't then say to them, you can have 17 paper clips and not 16. If, if the, if the chief says, I need 17 police paper clips, and I'm gonna give up six staplers to make that happen, then you will rarely see us as non-law enforcement specialists second guess those choices. Not that we don't sometimes, because it, you know, it's, it's ultimately, we're accountable to the community and to the voters, but most voters have said to us, we don't want you, we're, we're not electing a, a social services administrator and a juvenile, and a, you know, criminal justice specialist, and a community college educator, and a postmaster, and a, and a, and an attorney to run, to, to make all those choices down at the, at that level of detail. It, it doesn't mean that we're, we're not hearing, because we are, we know the pain that it, that it mean, and then the dislocation that it means for so many of the people that have, have worked, in, in some cases for many years for the, for the city, and have done an outstanding job and have helped to produce the success in our community. We hear, and we feel it too, and we're, and we're sorry that we're in this position, and I, I think, as we said at the, at last week's meeting. But we're trying to reconcile, unlike the federal government and the state government, we have to make our, our revenues and our expenditures match, and so we're doing the best that we can under those difficult circumstances, and, and although I know many folks will disagree with individual decisions that are being made in each of the departments, on the whole, this reflects our best efforts as a team and as a community to try to come up with a solution to the, to the, to the severe budget, to the most severe budget reductions we've ever faced as a, as a city, and hopefully will, will, will ever have to face again. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the, um, I'd like to commend also the police and fire associations and the department heads on, on coming together on this. It's been very difficult, and I know there's been a lot of sacrifice by both agencies and the people in those agencies to make this work, and I, I don't really want to see this happen again. Um, you know, of course, we, we don't control things from up here, we don't know what the economy's gonna be like, uh, you know, six months from now. But one, one of the, the issues I brought up at the last council meeting was, you know, I suggested that we save these positions by looking and paying for that using one of two ways, either looking at how we use our city attorney, and the other is looking at how we do dispatch. Right now, we're paying our city attorney between $900,000 and a million dollars a year. The question at the last meeting was, is it time to look at contracting that out? How much could we save doing that? The other is a potential huge savings that we could garner in looking at how we dispatch. So I'm not sure if the city manager has direction, sufficient direction on council of those two issues, but my request would be if council would agree with me to have staff study those issues. For example, on the city attorney, when would be a good time to switch in, in-house in this economy, based on the costs, so we can make a decision whether or not that's even appropriate? Right now, we don't have that information. The same issue with the dispatch, what that would mean in terms of our cost savings, not only that, but also how that would impact our regional partners, for example, the county of Yolo. With that information and getting started on that now, we've got a potential to have, I think, well over $100,000 of savings, probably a lot more. Um, and the closer we get to doing this, say, the closer we'll get to be able to use it in a decision on what we need to do there. Because a year from now, we may be in the same position, even if not, if we have $100,000 or more of savings, or whatever that number's going to be, we could bolster our reserves and continue to maintain a healthy reserve account. So my question is whether or not, unless there's any opposition, I would direct staff to study those two issues.
I, I would, we, we have, in the, in the, what is it, Mr. Chris talking about, in the 14 years I've been on the council, we've studied the issue of the in-house city attorney formally three times. So we, we do have some information on it, and to the extent to which the city manager might be able to give us some indication whether the, the assumptions or the figures in the most recent of those analyses have changed, that would, that would, that would warrant it, I would certainly be interested in, in a sort of a baseline effort. But each time, we've, we've started with the presumption that there were large savings to be had, and, and I, and I know in, in at least one of those reviews, that was my opinion, uh, and then when we actually ran the numbers, didn't turn out so well. And so I just want to make sure that, the last time we did a budget, and toward the end, the city manager, in his infinite wisdom, convinced us to agree conceptually to red light cameras at the last second, and we put it in the, even put it in the budget with the assumption that revenue, and we actually studied it, the city manager still liked the idea, but the, the council, at least mostly, did not, and I just, I don't want to, I don't want to prejudge the outcome of, of what can be, can be decisions that have, you know, unintended consequences by rushing to judgment in the budget process, which I know you're suggesting that we'd look at this for, for next year. And so to some extent, it, it means we ought to be looking at the set of potential savings and reorganization alternatives that are out there, and then prioritize which of those we actually want to study and pursue, in the same way that we do an annual strategic plan. And so I, I, to me, I'm a little reluctant to say tonight, city manager, these two rise above all the other ideas, and so go, go spend staff time that we have let, just laid off, not this week, but two weeks ago, when we took away the, you know, we eliminated the deputy city manager position, and we, we took away the, a lot of the people that would do this kind of work. I think it's incumbent on us to be able to, to then prioritize exactly that kind of work, and those, those are definitely two of the kinds of issues that should be in the mix, but I, I just, I personally, I'm a little uncomfortable saying, let's start with those two and not assess what is the landscape of potential ones. And you, you mentioned a bunch of them, of other ones last week, or last meeting as well, and I know other members of the council have, have proposed ways to save money or to operate more efficiently, and we ought to, and, and I know our employees individually have come up with ideas, some of which have been already incorporated in the budget, others which have not, we ought to, you know, have some sort of process and timeframe for saying, what are the, what's the big menu of those? And then of those, what do we really want to invest the limited executive staff time to, to explore and to study? So I think, you know, these are, those are good candidates, but I'm, I'm personally not comfortable in saying, right, at this moment, city manager goes, you know, go initiate a brand-new, a brand-new study of just those two issues, even though I think they're good, they're good, based from which to start. Mr. Johansson, then Mayor Protanbiagis?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, a good suggestion, but I, I would embark on that study sooner rather than later, because if we wait for six months to do this, the study's gonna be out another three or four, or five, or six, or whatever months. So, you know, I think we need to get that idea fairly quickly, so I would hate to have this issue just bogged down into some study that's never going to happen. It, it really is urgent now that we look at every single possible way, because we've got people that are being laid off here, and, and, you know, if there's a way to prevent that, I'd like to see that happen. Of course, most of these things aren't short, some of are short-term, some are long-term, for example, the dispatch could be years that we would see any savings there, but some of these other issues, six months, we could see savings if we start now. We start in six months from now, it'll be a year from now, we see the savings. So I would, I would, I mean, recommend, if we're going to study this package of savings that we get going on it now, at least get a preliminary analysis from staff on what this looks like, rather than waiting to some date uncertain.
Mayor Protanbiagis?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So just to pick up on that point, I, I'm not opposed to, I mean, I think your question initially was whether or not there's any opposition to it. I'm not opposed to it, I, I think we need to continue to look at ways in which to, to save or to realize savings, and the sooner the better. I mean, I, I agree with that. I, I think we ought to have a, a formal process by which we bring those items to the council for discussion, outside of this immediate agenda item, which I think requires honest, direct, and, and responsible decision-making, which leaves us less than a month to come up with an entire two-year balanced budget, which none of those things between now and July 1 is gonna help. So I think, for me, the focus ought, it, it needs to be, how do we balance this budget this evening, and then we take on? But, but I, I think the idea merits some consideration, I just don't see how that helps the immediate situation, because I think you're right, most of the savings that you're speaking about and did a couple of weeks ago are not gonna be for, for down the road a little ways longer, so. So with that, I, I guess, I would, I also want to thank the police and fire, I think they've done a wonderful job of coming forward. This is an awkward thing in that it's not the typical negotiations where we have sort of the back and forth of figuring out how do we come to a, a conclusion about what are reasonable compensation packages. This is a, so it's a budget situation that's quite different, and so it doesn't lend itself to the sort of, sort of formal contract back and forth, so it puts everybody in a, in an awkward situation. I think we hire, you know, very dedicated, committed, smart people to run our agencies for us, give us the best recommendations on how to manage and how to balance a budget, and then as the mayor said, it's our responsibility to come up here and make those very, very difficult decisions, especially when people are actually in the positions and they're being considered for elimination or for reduction in, in pay. It's a, it's a very difficult thing to do, but I think it's the thing that we're, you know, as said, we're elected to do. With that, I, I would, I guess I wanted to just make sure that I understand, in the, for the police department, the original plan had some, some reductions in some of the positions, yeah, to eight, 0.8 positions. Chief, and I know you and I have talked about this several times in the last couple of weeks, but I just want to make sure, and I'd like to put out for folks to, to hear, the positions that are being considered for a reduction to 0.8 positions, in your professional opinion, you've said that the work, it's not as if there's two tenths of a, of the work less, the work is gonna remain the same, people are just gonna have to work harder, more, more efficiently, but in your opinion, you think that that's where some savings can occur, and so consequently, you, you propose that, and that's what's before us this evening, for the two administrative aides, the two administrative analysts, and then the one youth counselor position. And I know we have to be conservative as we put together a two-year budget, and that's the responsible thing to do, and I'll keep saying that, but you do, down further along the road in your comment section, indicate that the possibility of retirements within the department in the next 90 days allow for the possibility of some funds being freed up, and I guess I would just put a plug in for, well, I'll back up for a moment. For the elimination of positions, it's, it's gonna be extremely difficult to pull those back into the mix, and I think you've made that determination, and at least for myself, I will rely on your professional judgment about what we can live and what we can't live with. But I guess I would say that if, in the next 90 days, and I don't want to get too optimistic, but if within the next 90 days, we realize some, some additional funds as a result of retirements, I would encourage us to continue to look at those positions, because I know the work isn't going to go away. Uh, I know the quality and the caliber of the work that is being produced out of the police department merits continued observation of sort of how folks are functioning and how, how good the work is being done, and I think it, it warrants consideration if there's funds freed up to be able to go back to that. And again, I don't want to get into the micromanaging, I just want to put that out, because I know the quality of the work that we're getting and the intensity of the work that, that is necessary for our police department to produce what, what it's doing, so I would just, I would share that with, with, with my colleagues. But overall, I think staff has done an incredible job, I think it's our job to support what I think in their professional opinion is the right thing to balance our budget, and I think we're getting real close.
Mr. Beers?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has always been a trying time with these budget cuts, but I, I want to, I want to start with, with this budget proposal, first of all. Staff has worked diligently with both the police and fire departments and the associations, and I think this community is doubly blessed. We have dedicated employees who are also willing to put their money where their mouth is, and, and you should all be commended for the efforts that you've taken on behalf of the city, and it's appreciated and will always be recognized. To the larger question about where we're going, one of the, the reductions I was looking through when I was talking to city manager before the first budget hearing was a reduction in strategic planning monies, and I asked the city manager, I says, you're not cutting back on the annual strategic planning, are you? Because I said, that's, to me, a very critical piece of our job, and he said, no, we've, we've achieved some efficiencies. And, and so I want to remind all of us here at the council that that's actually where we do the heavy lifting as a council in setting these priorities. And the priority that we set for the city manager this year with relation to the budget was to right-size the organization to our revenues. And from my viewpoint, that's exactly what's happened, and it's an ongoing process, it's, it's not one that you can say, okay, this is it forever, because situations change. But what, what we ended up with is a recognition that we're gonna be lower revenues for the foreseeable future, so what's the organization gonna have to look like? And so we've made some very, very difficult choices, but I know that within that process, the city manager and the management team looked at every place. So I know they actually have looked at the attorney, they've looked at all of the, the pieces that go into making up our city government, and they've made decisions at this point where they can make the best and, and see the most productive cuts, and that's why we have the budget that was proposed for us in recognition of, of all of the factors that... the factors that were there. And so, to me, the strategic planning process and where we give direction to the city management and team is where we make the decisions on, at the broad base, on what we want this city to look like. So we said, right-size the organization, because we can't deficit spend, that's not, frankly, the five of us up here, that's not in our makeup to do that. And further, that's not right for the people in the community. So for us now to go through what we've gone through and then give different direction to the staff about specific proposals, I think kind of gets away from our mission and our values. So I wouldn't support your specific requests, Mark, because those should be part, if they are to be looked at, should be part of a strategic look at the city. And I know that the city manager's goal is still to right-size the organization. So in two months, if we have different experiences, he's already going to be looking at the next list of issues that have to be done. And we have a process, it's a community process. And frankly, folks, I think it worked. I mean, I think the firefighters generated a lot of interest at the last meeting about what was happening, and we brought in a whole bunch of people who got to see what was going on. But at the end, it made everybody work harder to get to a solution that we could hopefully work with, not that we like, but that we can work with. And so that's where we are today. So I regretfully have to support where we are, because that's the values that we have as a community, and that's what we have to achieve. And it impacts individuals, and I'm sorry for that, but it's the job that we have to do, and so this is where we are. And as far as the future, I think the council's direction to the city manager is the same as it was at strategic planning. Keep this organization right-sized to our revenues, make sure that we're prioritizing services, and as appropriate, bring those specific items back to the council that you think will enhance revenues, make us more efficient, save dollars. Those are the instructions that we gave the city manager. And for us to go down a different road and say, do this, do this, do that, is not where I want to be. So those are my comments.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I too want to thank all the people that have been involved, especially in police and fire and their associations, for coming up with some solutions. They weren't all the solutions that I think everybody wanted, but I mean, they were still, they were some solutions. And I think that for us to sit up here and micromanage the two chiefs would be disingenuous. But I also want to thank all the other city employees that we have. I mean, and they weren't, you know, coming in and parading people in from public works or, you know, local 39 didn't do it. And there's a lot of other people that are, that were affected, that weren't just police officers and firemen. And I realize that there's a pecking level, there is a priority. And some of that, especially with public safety, because we're talking about all of our lives. I wish there was a, you know, an easy solution to all of this, but I think that, as my colleagues have said, that, you know, we've told the city manager, in essence, our, whatever we do here, is we try to set some kind of a policy, we pass that policy on to the city manager, and that issue was to get the city to a size that it can actually function at and stay within the amount of revenues that we have, much like we do at home. We have it home, and we try not to, you know, deficit spend, and try not to put too much money on our credit cards and all of the other kinds of things, and keep things within a family budget. And in essence, that's what I think city manager is trying to do. And so I concur with what my colleagues have been saying. Now, as to the city attorney's issues that take a look at, I mean, I don't mind taking a look at them, but, I mean, I think that, you know, before we go out and hire some consultant or do something, we should have three, as the mayor had indicated, three studies, because we've studied this three or four different times since I've been on, well, three or four times, yeah, in 20 some-odd years. And I'm sure that there's a whole lot of data, and there's a whole lot of issues, but just, I mean, everybody looks, that's out there, looks, and they see Bob, or they see, you know, one of the city attorneys. Well, that's not it at all. If you're going to hire a city attorney, you've got to hire probably two. You have to have paralegals. You have to have a whole infrastructure with books and datas and all the other things that attorneys look at and read and do. There's really a lot of things that go into it. And then, really, one of the biggest is when we get into a big project, or we get into a special project, that city attorney isn't going to handle that project. That city attorney's going to farm it out, and you're going to have another one. So when we start talking, I mean, that's what these past studies have showed us. And I think that that's what Christopher, the mayor, alluded to, was, you know, there's a lot of issues that really go behind the scenes, that it really sounds like a good idea, because you see this big figure out there. But at the same time, when you sit down and you break it down, it's probably more costly to go in-house than it is to do what we do. Now, having said that, we should certainly, I think, as a council, we need to make some policy changes, if you will. And, you know, the attorneys have to, I mean, the development communities are going to have to pay their way. And because that didn't happen, all of a sudden, we had a spike. And so now we need to change that spike. And so I do think that we will have some cost savings in the very near future, just because I do believe that the council would make the decision that, you know, you and the people in the development community are going to have to pay their own way. And so, anyway, but I don't mind taking a look at it again, if we can dust some of those things off. And if you and your staff feel that, hey, there's really some meat here, there's some merit, then I'm more than willing to go where Mark wants to go. I have no idea what is going on with this call center, because from everything that I have read in the past, it's a good two and a half to three years away. It's a long ways out there. And so I don't know how we can have any quick interim savings by joining forces with Sacramento. And at the same time, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that we're in Yolo County. And, I mean, and maybe we can use as leverage Sacramento's call center, and maybe we can get our rates cheaper, or however they do it. I've forgotten how we make those calls and adjustments. I've forgotten how we do that, because I remember when we were, went with part of Yolo County's. But at the same time, I don't know. So I think that there may be some economy and scale there. And if anybody, or, I mean, it's like my fellow council members alluded to, all the city departments, they came up with some cost savings, and, you know, if we can start to bundle all those, put those all together, and bring them forth in an orderly manner, and in the whole context of, you know, saving some money, so that it might not help the people that are immediately hired. Because, I mean, I think that there's going to be some time drag. But, you know, just maybe, it could be fast enough, so if some of those people haven't found work, or if we need to make sure that we go from eight tenths to point one, then I think that we ought to do something in the whole context of a budget. And I don't know if that comes back in August or September, I forget when all of that usually hits us again. But at the same time, you know, I don't mind taking a look at all that. I mean, I think it's healthy, it's good, and it's probably something we should do on a yearly basis. Right now is sort of an anomaly, because we're losing some of our friends, and we're affecting people's lives. So, anyway, those are the comments.
Well, if you're counting, I've moved my opinion toward Mr. Beers' camp on the whole city attorney issue, although, and the others. There is going to be a tipping point where it will make sense, as we grow as a city, there will be a tipping point where it will make sense for us to have an in-house city attorney. And that's influenced both by the amount of work that we have, and this would be the odd time, right when we're, right when we have virtually no development agreements to negotiate, no, a lot of the stuff that's generated, so much of the activity and the work in the city attorney's office for the last couple of years is reduced substantially. So we're not on that trajectory at the moment. But there will be a point where it will be enough work in the city attorney's office that it will make sense to have a couple. And you have to have a couple, because there's no great land use lawyers who are also good, public employment lawyers who are also good sidewalk tripping liability employers, lawyers who also know a lot about water intake law, who also know something about, it just doesn't work that way.
Medical marijuana?
So you, I don't know anything about medical marijuana.
A whole new?
So you're absolutely right. You either have to have enough of them to cover all those areas well, not just, you know, junior folks right out of law school, or you're constantly having to contract out, which costs a significant amount, because you don't get as good a rate contracting out, you know, going to an attorney just to get advice about water law. Then if you had a water law attorney as part of your overall contract, where you're buying a whole lot of hours at once. So there is going to be a point where it will probably make sense, and there may be a point in the actual city attorney's office. I mean, right now, we benefit a lot from having the same city attorney that we've had for a very long time. And so we don't pay as much having to go back to research what happened eight years ago. At some point, that will likely change. So, I mean, there is a trajectory where, for me at least, what we learned in the past studies is it will transition to a point where it will make financial operational sense to have an in-house city attorney. But it's not an area where you try to cut corners and then invite people to sue you and to lose litigation, or to have people sue because they think that you're no longer as strong on the litigation side. So it's not an area to toy with for $20,000 or $25,000, given the risks that are involved with litigation for an organization of our size and our perceived pockets for juries. So I, I mean, I just, I don't think we're at that stage yet, and I don't see it, especially since so much of our legal costs are not general fund, that it's a significant area for us to move forward with as a sort of an emergency item, that we study it instantly. So for me, I'm in the same boat. I would do it as part of our regular analysis point, dust off the studies, and as you have been doing, whether we like it or not, with the example being the red light cameras, bring us, continually bring us your proposals, your best thinking, your best ideas of your management team, the employees, citizens, and others, that make sense, that will achieve the objectives that have been outlined. I will say, just on the retirement issue, because I don't, at least for me, I don't want to undo the direction we gave last week, which is that you're already budgeting for a certain number, at least, of retirements to occur, for the overall city budget, without regard to department. And you were asked last week to verify that retirements are not owned necessarily by the department in which they occur. And so that an additional unexpected retirement in the police department doesn't necessarily accrue back to the police department. You're going to have to make a judgment as to the overall needs of the city. And it may be that it restores a layoff somewhere, but it may, or in one of the departments, which might, may or may not be the police department. So I don't, at least for my, I'm not signaling an undoing of that from our action of two weeks ago. These specific ones that are here, both in the agenda packet and in the side letter with the fire department, were specifically intended to try to deal with those specific issues, which is why they're articulated that way. But they're not normal, this is not the normal way that we would handle a retirement opening in that sense. Mr. Johansson?
Toby, when is the last time we went out for bid on attorney services?
I don't know that we've ever gone out to bid for attorney services. I believe the city attorney that we have now preceded the city.
Right, thanks. All right, any further discussion? All right, then, is there a motion on the item? And the motion would be the recommended action, including the side letter with local 522. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mr. Johansson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to point out that the city school two-by-two that is scheduled for June 7 will likely be canceled, and so I doubt there will be a meeting.
Any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
I wanted to alert the council to an event that occurred this, today, this afternoon, actually, I think around noon, there was a pneumonia release from Agrium that resulted in five employees being moderately injured, but addressed at the site, but one actually going to a medical facility. That was controlled. Police and fire were quick to respond. The internal operations of the facility were good. There was a release, it was a plume that went outside of the building, but it didn't affect much beyond the immediate area, and they did bring it into control very quickly. But that's obviously a very, very dangerous area, and one that we've been very concerned about in the past. And so the number of special training exercises that we've done in conjunction with that facility, I think, were brought to bear today. We used the reverse 911 system to alert people to stay inside the buildings and wait till the whole situation was resolved.
Is that inducing a review with our hazmat and emergency response team?
They will be.
Agrium's existing procedure, so?
Right. They actually responded very quickly themselves, but it quickly got out of their control, immediate control, and it did start to affect areas around, so we had to be involved.
Okay. Any questions on city manager's report, city attorney report?
Nothing.
Staff direction from members of the council? And we have no future agenda item requests? Okay, Mr. Beers moves, and Mr. Kristoff seconds. If the meeting be adjourned, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.